Okay, we're recording. We're recording.
Mr. Chairman, we're ready.
According to one, like all of the Spokane County Division, it's Thursday. The rule, one of the rules of the public, they just say in person, or by utilizing our wavelength and telepathy, talking to planes, star nine, raise hands, or six, three, two, one. I think we're going to limit this to one, three minutes, comment if you're going to do this during this reading, because you can't see the comments here to the current agenda. Chat is not supported. For further businesses to, uh, merely in good whose commission, I need to shut off.
Bonnie Edwards. Go ahead, boy.
They broke up.
Mike Hassay, Pete Rainer, Stephen Paul. Thank you, everyone, for being here. The next floor of business is, um, a public comment period, this period, um, in our right of the meeting set to be by the public to, um, protest for any items that are currently on this agenda, but the agenda everybody has, if anybody wants to make comments or, or accept the point of commission, that it's not on this agenda, you have to report, and also against the, so, and that's okay too. Same done, let's move on. We're going to be continuing the public hearing for the public participation program, so, we are basically here to receive your comments and remarks, and we have invited them, what's this, Pete, on it, go ahead, Scott.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I could kind of lay out the calendar for that, as you know, you opened the public hearing at your last meeting, we asked you to continue it through today. The objective is to take comments in that period, including at today's meeting, if, if people are still interested in commenting, and then staff will be taking those, revising and amending the public participation program document that you last saw. We will be posting that, uh, in early or in the next couple of weeks, uh, twenty-one days in advance of your May sixteenth meeting, at which time we'll be asking you to make recommendations to the board. So, yes, the floor is open for continuing, for any more continuing comments on the public participation.
No raised hands.
Are you asking for comments, uh, about the specific issue, the Spokane Gun Club? And, no, you're not, I'm sorry. Thank you.
This is, uh, supporting the agenda, continuing Spokane County Conference of Plan two thousand and twenty-six periodic update, public participation program. Good morning, Melissa, Melissa Willstruck, who's one of our commissioners, who's, George Smith. I'll just, you know, just, I mean, just start.
Mr. Chairman, if there are any comments, we can move on, and we would ask you to not close the public hearing, we can open until you consider this document in place.
Next on the business is, um, CTA zero-two dash two-zero-two-four, this is supporting new shade and zoning text amendment to, uh, S C P fourteen, two-six-six, two-hundred, to allow heading for time slightly, for temporary residential uses, uh, when the landlord provides demonstrated need, the proposed amendment is to, is in response to the order of the road and requires.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, this is the following up on where we're, and we'll skip our preliminaries here, and go to first one, so this is, uh, again, this is, uh, amending our code to provide administrative discretion from the department to allow temporary uses, notably in the gray fire, elk fire areas, to continue beyond what the current code says, is a six-month period with a six-month extension. Uh, this allows, uh, the staff to make those extensions really for as long as people need to rebuild their lives, if it takes two or three or four or five years. Excuse me, those temporary uses, uh, will be allowed by the department. They do have to, everyone has to provide some justification, but that justification could simply be, I'm not ready to move yet, and I'm not able to rebuild, uh, so great latitude will be offered for this. Uh, but this is a public hearing, but welcome comments from the public.
That's a question about the public comment, and Bernie Palmer, they were concerned about having no time limit, only at all, because my memory couldn't just, yeah, I mean, respond to that, and we need to add a time limit, to get where you can stand, and just sort of the way we were thinking about it, just some more context would be helpful.
Certainly, and, and yes, there's, there's kind of two choices, you can either put a limit on it or not put a limit on it. Uh, we've chosen what we believe is a reasonable middle ground, and that those extensions will be granted with cause, uh, so they're not truly indefinite, but someone has to demonstrate, uh, that, that there is progress toward rebuilding something, and that they're still needing additional time to do so.
Christian Corriella, they're actually more concerned that clarity in the language was lacking, and they just offer that twelve months to the annual update. So, if you saw in the attachments, we had the original language, and that's circulated, and then there's, uh, we had much, he is getting a lot of feedback.
I'll just turn it off and talk loudly, but the, uh, attachment fee just has what, uh, staff believes would be clear language we either recommend to the board.
Thank you.
A question, can we come back and circle the lights again, and address it later on? Can we, can we come back, let's say in six months or so forth, and readdress this again, I mean, because we're trying to accommodate these as far as, you know.
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the reason this is before you is, uh, with a sense of urgency. The emergency team that is, is assembled itself to help these folks rebuild, are asking specifically to have the comfort to be able to say, we don't have to do this in six months plus six months. So, we are asking for a recommendation today, uh, for the board to consider to move this forward, but in terms of reconsidering it, if we find, uh, that it's, that we need something different in, in a year or in six months, certainly, we can, we can propose a second or a different amendment.
I have a big question, Melissa, um, isn't, like, is there a condition, and I apologize about what we need to, it should be, um, like, demonstrating a shovel in the ground or something like that to show that, yes, we are going forward, I understand, I agree with everybody that's been through this, uh, terrible disaster, uh, but just to be able to demonstrate some, or, um.
We, we, in, in my opinion, we are going to err on the side of, uh, caution. If, if someone makes the least, at least possible attempt to say, I'm not ready yet, I'd like an extension, we're likely to grant that. You know, we, everyone would like to see substantive progress, uh, the reason we were asked for this is, we've been, you know, we're aware that some of our rural residents may be uninsured or uninsured, and may not be able to rebuild in a timely manner, they may have need for this temporary housing for four or five years, and we're, we're simply prepared to offer that extension, uh, as, as liberally as possible.
Um, just, being as a builder here in this area, I get a little bit of trouble about that area, it's, uh, built, and a lot of people can't, like, how high the interest rates are, that they're underinsured, people thinking that they have enough insurance or anything, there's so many different sets of that, so, uh, just, we've seen a couple of losses.
Yeah, just kind of also background, uh, both our planning, land use side and our building permit side have been very creative, yeah, trying to, uh, help people, you know, who are rebuilding and, and will have to rebuild under different building codes than they were under before, uh, so we're, and there've been some state legislative approval to provide a, a funding source that can help offset some of the added expenses of the new codes versus the old codes. Now, the, our, our planning and building office is, is expediting those, those building permit requests, we're also interpreting, uh, critical areas and shorelines, again, liberally, so that if someone's attempting to rebuild substantially what they have, uh, we're generally, uh, letting them use that same, uh, for example, critical area of shoreline permit, rather than, uh, imposing the differences in, in those critical areas, which are substantial in the last twenty years. Uh, if someone is proposing to rebuild substantially larger or substantially closer to a water body, then we are, uh, we, we are looking at the current rules, but to provide essentially a rebuild, uh, we're, we're, we're doing everything we can to make that, uh, expedited as possible.
Thank you very much. Do you have any comments from the commission? Any comments from those here, or with the race channel? And while I'm waiting for that, Mr. Paul, I have a pink slip or a yellow slip, uh, and it says, you want to speak on the alteration of the code, of conditional code, um, the chair has no doubt of what that means, set on the gun, it's a, what do you, okay, I just wanted to, I, I didn't, shoot that.
Okay, so, uh, I'm, uh, preparing a motion to, um, recommend to the board to be able to, the Z T A dash oh-one dash two-zero-two before, as the language was prepared to find issues today, number the first up.
You close all the estimates. With that objection, you can close all the, just, you know, this, uh, agree with that? You do have, you've got a motion on the floor, please, wait a second, second by P, discussion on that motion, please.
Just, I mean, it's, you know, working to me, um, I'm, 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 I'm at the time limit, but I think that's, um, I was, I was, I was, keep those in mind, and if I was even with a chat to do like this, I don't want some flexibility, and so, I support this.
Okay, no discussion, I'm ready for the vote, all those who favor the motion, take the by by saying aye, all of us, by saying aye, Eric's, you mentioned. This is for the business workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have, and we'll take them in, in the order on the agenda, CTA oh-one-twenty-three, and that's CTA oh-one-twenty-four, these are the two zoning text amendments that you have seen last time, uh, the first one was related to, to changing the definition of a gun and archery range, and providing conditions by which that use would be permitted in our rural and resource lands here. So, what, what you had seen before, uh, this is the definition, is currently in the code, it's fairly unsophisticated. Now, the new one, the conditions, would be changing the definitions from, you know, archery and gun range, but also, hey, accessory uses that are more typical for shooting sports and shooting sports events, particularly multi-day events, uh, that are happening in areas throughout the country, as well as here in Spokane County. Uh, so these are, in fact, conditions by, uh, that would be imposed or, or looked at by the hearing examiner, um, if a organization like the Spokane Gun Club was to come in and, uh, want to, you, put that use in one of the rural areas that you saw on the chart. Yeah, so rural, traditional, and then our resource land, small tract, large tract, egg, horse, uh, we would welcome any, uh, thoughts, this is our public hearing, but we are still gathering public comment on this, and we know there are folks that want to speak to this. The one thing I would, I would say, though, this is a text amendment for, uh, the zoning code in terms of its definition, and adding conditions for where this would happen in one of these zones, notably, you know, those that are up here, uh, to our, we have no pending permit from the gun club in our shop for any particular site, uh, there is no site identified for this, this is a definition, that if it's adopted, would apply anywhere, uh, that any gun club or archery range would, would want to establish a business of it. So, this is not site-specific, there is no site, uh, anticipated at the moment for this use.
One of the, was this the, that's kind of initiated by?
It was, it was the, it was asked, the initiation was done by, uh, representatives of the gun club to broaden the definition of the, of their uses.
And maybe appropriate to hear from, then, correct, sort of, before we vote.
I have some questions, are we, is the one we're going to change, you know, from last week, or was that on that?
He would say, I'm in.
Uh, good morning, I'm Tom Nihuel, N-I-H-O-U-L, at one-three-one-two-four, South Upper Meadow Lane, Spokane, Washington, nine-nine-two-two-four. And I am president of the Spokane Gun Club, uh, I'm here to comment about this, what we're trying to do is find a piece of property, it will not be the property we currently own. If anybody wants to come up to us and give us a check for the appraised value of that property, I will sell it today. I will be able to be clear on that. Second is, the gun club, when we ask for the change of this, is to allow us to operate as we did previously at Green Acres, where we had multi-day shoots, we had people who would be out there, a hundred and fifty, two-hundred and fifty, three-hundred people. Now, the scale of the club that we're talking about is considerably smaller, about a third of that size, so we won't have that many people. We do not want to have RV parking. We do have people that might want to come in with a tent, because for the time period of the, of a competition, which generally would go from Thursday through Sunday, but that's only during those things, they can come in the day before, get set up, shoot, leave, we have no desire for anybody to be there when we are not operating in a, in an event like that. When we do our regular shooting for the, the general public to come out, or as members to come out and shoot, there is no camping, there's nothing going on, you're going to come out, you're going to shoot, you're going to go home. And we, we need to cor- clarify some things as far as the timeframe that they could shoot, uh, how much time in, in a day, and that would, you know, I would like to see it be that use the same hours that the, uh, Washington Department of Fish and Game use for shooting, and just use that, it depends upon darkness and lightness, we're only sure during the day, we don't shoot at night, uh, and go from there, so that's, that's the brief statement, I'd like to answer any question to you that.
There's a number of people that want to testify. Can I ask more question? You said that you don't have any interest in our department, but that is in the language that we have, is that something that staff wanted to, or should we, yeah, just curious for some more context?
The initial way that we put it, we wanted to have that, the, on the Superior Court of Appeals, they said that an RV park, I think they said it wrong, said that if you had a kitchen and restrooms in a clubhouse, and you let somebody drive in with an RV, that, that was an RV park. We do not want to have an RV park, we will not have an RV park, period.
And then there's one other thing, but then, it looks like the official hunting hours, there were, uh, hour before sunrise to sunset, is that what, what you're talking about?
Yes.
Other questions?
Raise hands. Thank you, I appreciate the time, appreciate that, that's pleasure.
I'll be here if anybody's got questions, please do.
We, uh, very briefly.
What was the particular amendment? Uh, I just want to, uh, refresh your understanding of what's, uh, in front of you is language that, uh, helps the hearing examiner, if it's adopted into the code, and there, there's several, uh, of these kind of elaborations, I'll call them, under criteria for condition use. What we experienced, and a lot of folks in the audience today were, um, objecting to, uh, properties that we're not going to use, and it was uncertain and unclear in the criteria of the zoning code, what we could do, um, and therefore, in the interim, having had that experience, we're asking to clarify for the benefit of the hearing examiner, that these particular, uh, items are accessory to, and normal to the activities of, of the gun club. We all went away and gave up our rights to the, uh, valley site, which had been in existence for years, and then urbanization came in around it, and all of the pressure, and the school, hence the sale of the property, but it was given up, was the expectation and assurances by members of the board and the commissioners, that while they didn't have the ability to guarantee it, they were reassuring us that, when they look for another site, they would understand why we needed to resurrect ourselves and be able to do what we were doing. The primary aspect of this, um, of the, of the viability of the, uh, club is these, uh, multi-day events in which, uh, fees are charged, uh, and participation occurs upon payment of the fee and so on, that's the bread and butter of keeping the doors, and it needs to have weekend. So, that's the idea, this is just a, a list of clarifications, ultimately, for the hearing examiner, it's the type of thing that, ultimately, we ourselves, upon adoption of whatever gets adopted, we then write up our condition to use application for a specific site, and by the way, we don't have a new site yet, we're looking, but we're going to wait until we get the, uh, adoption of this language, then we will go forward and, uh, make a formal application, the hearing examiner will then have the criteria that's freshly adopted in front of him, the site plan, and a site-specific, uh, area to judge and condition accordingly. Thank you.
Oh, you had a question? Excuse me. No?
All right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we would, uh, certainly take any comments, uh, from the public that are offered.
And one, one question, uh, shared my head, and, uh, one of the, it says on the, CTA zero-one, it's two-zero-two-four, this is two-three, dude, was that a, was that like?
It was there.
Oh, oh, I didn't want to, yeah, I didn't want to, not like testify stuff, but that is, right, well, we have, uh, a few that would like to speak, and so, we'll also be watching the monitor up here, if anyone can raise their hand. Dale McCollum, would you please, uh, come forward? Name and address, please. Welcome.
I'm Young Long, two-two-two-one-two, West Elm Lane, Medical Lake, Washington, nine-nine-zero-two-two. Um, I was here over twenty years ago, um, I was one of the people that had a bullet fly over my head from the shooting on that property, um, the people, the commissioners that were here this last time, put that property, put signs up for a no shooting zone.
Did you take a little footage of mine, please, my ear is done?
Sorry, I'm not very good at talking in front of people either.
Thanks.
So, I'm, it's, I'm pretty disappointed, the commissioners this time around, changing that property to a no, to a shooting zone, and, um, there's a lot of families that live in that area with small children, I don't know if the, um, examiner had been up my Elm Lane Road from the cemetery, I know that's a very important part of this, but, um, there's twelve families that live just northwest of there, I don't know if he drove up there and seen all that, but we all have farm animals, and there's small children, and they're going to have to listen to this shooting all day, every day, and, um, also, I want to point out is that the wells are drying up in that area, I know two wells that have dried, dried up, and we have another well there, they'll probably take our, some of our water later, we all burn there, and, um, also, I don't understand how their child is going to allow shooting in that area, those airplanes fly directly over that spot, and there's also trains that go by there that carry, I don't know, with ones, and I know bullets don't always hit their targets, they will ricochet and could possibly cause an explosion, or there could be one person not seeing those airplanes flying over, and then I could probably shoot one of those airplanes with my media, they're so close to my house. And I guess I, um, we've been to court, uh, three different times now, and every one of them. And every one of them has said no. And I don't understand why they can't accept no for an answer. And now they're telling us that they're not interested in this property, but they still want to build, there's, they're saying they're not gonna do an RV park. They're gonna, you know, if you change the rules, then one thing's gonna lead to another. And I'm just, um, I'm totally against this whole process. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let me remind the commissioners, this is not an action about approving a specific site. Uh, the site that the gun club had previously purchased on the West Plains, uh, that has gone through a court process. The gun club is not permitted to use that for a gun club or purposes. Uh, this is not to revisit that. This is to change the definition of what a gun club is. So that when they look, or they or anyone looks for a new site, there will be a set of more strict conditions imposed on that by our hearing examiner in looking for that. But this is not about the current site. That current site was found by the court. Uh, the, the gun club was found ineligible to use that site by the court. They cannot use that site for a gun club.
When we adopted the town plan, state law, it was thirty seven years ago. Came under Spokane County jurisdiction, I think in ninety-three because of truth. Um, I was part of that, probably as major. But looking back, the gun club is dealing with the problem of our own making in the sense that we, we create these majors. And what you can and you can't do. But we don't, we don't set a scoring record operating like that. So for the RV facility, I've had to deal with this with restaurants. If I serve coffee in my restaurant, there's a big park overnight, is that a fairing partner? How does hearing examiner deal with that? So I, I think a lot of what we're trying to do here is everybody is to make it clearer what can and can't be done because in, in the case of the RV park, um, having somebody camp overnight is not an RV park. Hearing examiner doesn't know that. So I think part of what we're doing with this twenty twenty-six provision in this particular motion and motion for the emergency care, trying to fix some problems so that businesses in Spokane have an idea what we're doing. I don't know if that helps any, but that's, that's part of what we're doing and why this provision is being considered. It has nothing to do with this site.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, I, I, I think we get, um, perhaps confused by the words recreational vehicle in this. The court found that under the current definition, recreational vehicle use was not allowed on the site that was proposed. That was one of the reasons the court found against the gun club. We are, we, we agree with that decision and the restrictions being proposed or the conditions rather being proposed in this are to allow for overnight camping. And, and we're not limiting it. You know, we're not trying to say you have a tent of this size or a vehicle of this size or trailer or the back of the picket or something. But what we are saying is it's not open to the public. It must be registered participants in a shooting sports tournament or competition that have a reason to be there, uh, other than that and are simply participating in a multi-day event. These would never be open to somebody driving up on a Thursday and saying, oh, I'd like to camp here for a few days. That, that would not be allowed. So this is very restricted to users that are there for multi-day events.
Please remember you move the next on the other. Thank you, Mr. Call. Anthony Whitehead, question?
Hello, I'm Anthony Whitehead. I live at two two zero two two West Door Road, Medical Lake, Washington, nine nine zero two two. So, um, related to, uh, these, uh, amendments, uh, it's, it's related to the traditional zone. And, um, I'm not sure what this gentleman's name is, but when he talks about, uh, clarification, that's great. There's clarification in it, right? But it's also a clear expansion of what a gun range is. You know, a gun range is not a sports complex. It is not. So what it allows them to do, they can say all they want and say, oh, we're not gonna use this side or that side. But there's nothing binding about that. This goes through. They can go wherever they want and, and apply those amendments. Or apply the new, new, uh, code. And so I have a problem with that, um, especially in a rural traditional zone. Um, you know, it, it typically, you know, it's a single family home, a larger, much larger lot. And depending on the density of those homes, um, around a, a particular gun range or a proposed one, it can have a very large impact on those people that were there. The gun clubs, gun ranges would be approaching on those people. Um, it would be far different if a gun club went to, um, a, a, a much larger wide open, um, area. And then if people in, that was their choice. That's their choice. They can make that choice. But if people are there and then they're parking a gun range in any area, and I'm not saying, not specifying any area as they didn't, it, it significantly impacts those homeowners. So, um, I don't mind clarification, but, uh, I don't want this disguise uh, that it's just clarification and not expansion. Uh, also, uh, what I would like to bring up is, um, something that's important to, I think, most people and reasonable to most people, that you don't park a gun range right across the road from a cemetery. And I'm not talking about any specific site. You don't park it thirty feet across the road from a cemetery. And I propose that you have a one mile minimum in this language away from any cemetery. I, I guess I'm done, but, uh, thank you for your time. I hope, uh, you listened.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Bye. Is that right?
Uh, Mr. Chair, well, we're getting ready for the next speaker. We've received some feedback from our digital audience. They're having trouble hearing, uh, all of you speak. The podium microphone seems to be fine, but if you could try to lean into your microphones a little bit when you're making comments, our audience would appreciate it.
Uh, my name is Carol Whitehead. I live on forty-six twenty South Ritchie Road. How's that? Does that sound right? Okay. Testing, testing. Okay. Um, I, oh, oh, forty-six twenty South Ritchie Road, nine nine zero two two. That's Medical Lake as well. Um, my concerns, I have a few concerns. One is, is that the public comments portion of the website did not accept comments. It did not, it's accepted and it did not log them. Uh, my, a few different people I know mentioned that, that they had tried and were not able to put those on. I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that because that limits potential people who might have something that they're going to say in your guys making your decisions about this. Okay, uh, that was that. One thing I would say that if you, uh, wherever you decide to put this, that there should be a few things also added to this. I think that there needs to be reasonable access to fire protection. Because again, the gray fire and all that, we know how fast these things can get away from, from people. We also need to have reasonable access to emergency medical treatment because accidents do happen. And the nearest, you know, like a lot of places, when you get out of ways, you don't have anything for miles. Also, there should be reasonable access to law enforcement and/or superiority because overnight, overnight parking with people, things happen. We know that, 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 that happens. It's part of the world these days. Uh, also there should be adequate buffer zones, uh, and, um, what am I trying to say? Uh, brooms to control any stray projectiles that might fly around so they don't hurt deaths, uh, livestock, people, homes. Um, also I think that it would be nice if, other than their parents, that they would have one weekend day off every weekend so that the people that live near there would have one day on the weekend where they can enjoy family events outside and not have to listen to a gun range. Cause we do know that that is a sound that is not particularly relaxing. And people would like that. They would like to be able to go out and have a picnic in their yard or sleep in their hammock or whatever. And I think that's one of the reasons you would live in a, in a, in a traditional zone. Is that you would have access to this peace and quiet. Because we pay for it in other ways by having to provide our own water, having to deal with a lot of the hassles that come with living where you're providing your infrastructure. Also, uh, originally they used to have the shooting was ten to seven. So that was when the gun club, the operation times. Now ten to seven, that gives people time to have a morning and then it closed down a night, you know, where you time to have a little, a little bit of peace in the evening. And therefore I think that, that should not be changed to where they can go from dawn to dusk because that's just, that's just too much. Also, uh, they do have memberships that are day memberships that you pay or the lease they used to. Where you would pay for a membership for that particular day. And that is the same thing as having public access. And I, I just want to bring those things up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, you're, you are. Michael Chambers. Are you watching the street on Gun Club or?
I'd like to address this.
Did you see the, which one of the street, I'll invite your address to the street instead of my, maybe. And just.
My name is Michael Chambers. I live in three three four two four South Alk in Cheney, Alk Avenue. And I was here last week and I said this pretty much the same thing I want to say this week. But I, I really do have a concern. And I'm, I'm gonna read the last thing that I read on your website. Potential secondary impacts and influences. And that is each of these criteria that we seem to be wanting to add to this definition are standalone uses. And I don't understand why the commission couldn't say, you know, if you want to get a permit for camping, then you get a permit. If you want to get a permit for shooting, you get a permit. If you want to get a permit for a restaurant, you get a permit. That way the hearings examiner would have each one of those items with much finer definition to actually be able to police and set up an, an organized, uh, use on a broader perspective. I don't think by putting all of these uses into one definition is gonna make it easier for the hearings examiner. It's gonna make it more difficult because he's going to have to look at all these issues as, as one issue. And so my concern again is that these are all standalone. And so I think each one of them should be addressed independently. Thanks.
Okay. Eugene Kada. Thanks. Welcome.
My name is Eugene Kada. And I'm gonna follow fairly closely to my written comment, but, uh, I need to represent that I'm passionate about the Medical Lake Historic Cemetery on Third Road. I was stationed at Geiger Field in the fifties. And from that point on, became involved in business in Medical Lake. And raised five children, all graduated from the Medical Lake High School. I am so proud of that community's military history and all the veterans buried at that particular cemetery. Thirteen Civil War veterans to begin with. From that point on, veterans of all conflicts continued to be buried there. Uh, my feeling about this request for a change, I think this is a thinly veiled, in much contested attempt, quote, not site-specific to build on the four hundred and fifty acres that the gun club purchased immediately north of the cemetery. Central Valley School, Dr. Street bought their existing, um, lead polluted location in, uh, for eight million dollars. At the time, the president, I have a copy here, was spokesman review article where President Lewis Land suggested that it was a great timing for the gun club because they were in fact financially insulted at that time. The county at that particular time, same article, the county promised to help them along with their eight million dollars to relocate. Several court actions have, have followed and not allowed the gun club to proceed on Third Road. It's getting ridiculous. I can't imagine the attorney fees that may have gone on in promoting this particular thing. Again, I believe a thinly veiled event, uh, a change that will allow them to build out there just on Third Road. In closing, the Spokane, uh, the Spokane Gun, Gun Club has proven to be bad neighbors already. Trash, old mattresses and old tires dumped on their access road right across Thump Rock Thork from the cemetery entrance gate. I'm not sure if my photographs went, but that, that is a hundred feet off, off Third Road. Conclusion, the county may change the, may choose to change the code. I have no feeling about that. But please make our old cemetery, quote, site-specific and restrict their propo- their proposed development to at least one mile away from the cemetery, the Medical Lake Cemetery on Third Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick point. I don't think the speaker mentioned dumping or trash on the property. Uh, we will send our code enforcement people out there to take a look.
I, I hear that.
Right.
Oh, sorry. One eight two zero five East Riverway Avenue, Spokane Valley. Um, so if, if the gun club is no longer interested in that property, that's four hundred and fifty acres. I've been watching and hoping to see a percent sign. So, uh, we'll be glad to see that. We'll help you with that. So, um, even, even though this is not specific, um, this, what, what is? um, this, what what is the Medical Lake Cemetery is concerned about will be other places concerned about as well. What I would like to see is there's something in that that prevents the gun club from being close to a cemetery or a church. Maybe within at least a month. So if it isn't that location, any other location, there there's certain things that just should be guaranteed some peacefulness. Thank you.
Thank you. And Peggy, where's James? That's about, please, Sharon.
Morning, for the record, my name's Sharon Whitehead. I'm a property owner in Spokane County and I don't have an address yet. Um, I grew up out in this particular area. So when you're looking at community life, of course, you're not happy with it, but I don't want to see what happened here happen somewhere else. And so I am going to speak to the provisions of the code. The code, the way it is, actually doesn't apply with the original intent of gun shooting ranges, right? So the particular recommendations are articulated as restrictions. I I don't agree with that. If they're articulated as clarifying, I don't think that's the case either. They do really actually expand on flexibility for any gun club anywhere in Spokane County. Um, reducing the number of acres, for example. You know, it's tough. Nobody do, nobody wants to have a gun club in their neighborhood. It's hard. It's hard for you in your job to figure out how to balance the needs and wants of everybody, but nobody really does want that. Uh, so when you restrict the acreage, you make it more viable for more ranges to be included. When you start to ask, uh, allow for sales, merchandise, food, ammunition, of what value, um, then you expand it beyond something that's more cultural and it becomes a small business. When you actually go further and allow RV parking, allow camping, whatever charges that may occur for that, then you're moving into a sports complex and a much bigger business. None of these things are appropriate for your rural code. So that makes me concerned no matter where this site ends up being. I want to know how this works in translation. Spokane Gun Club, for example, on the most tourist site, uh, the property they currently own, um, one in forty RV parks, right? That's not just a couple of people camping overnight. That's a major concern. I think the other thing that's important to point out is that um most of these gun clubs are non-profit. So they have tax exemptions. So this is about the growth of Spokane County. I think you have, you like, and you're always balancing things, right? All of the sales, um, all of the revenue that's generated goes to the club. The residents of Spokane County are going to pay for all the community services, law enforcement, police, road, road lanes, right? So for me, you're asking for the benefit of, right now, for the Spokane Gun Club, for example, they have a hundred active members. That hundred members benefits greatly, more significantly than the other half a million residents in the county of Spokane. Um, there isn't really an ability remotely for people to testify or to make a comment, but again, I keep this going there and it isn't a restriction. I like more restrictions. I'm with some of the people in the audience. I don't think they should be shooting on Sundays. I don't think you should be shooting, you know, this isn't just Tuesday afternoon and once a year where you accommodate your neighborly and it's just a little inconvenient for a short while. Again, in a gun club, the proposal is seven days a week. Seven days a week, the hours listed. I noticed the hours are listed in the code, but not the days of the week. So what you're looking at here is really a major expansion. Um, you know, for that, let me see, I want to make sure I get in a comment from the folks from LA. Uh, staff report, it mentions there's a staff report that has somebody provided, can't find it out online. Hmm, and finally, and I appreciate the comments, but I and I like the concept of a fraternity organization that gets an opportunity to help. It's not seven days a week, the forty RVs anywhere in Spokane County. The other thing is that this isn't a sworn testimony. I appreciate what's being said, but it's not sworn to be the case. You expand this call, there's nothing that prevents them going back to the property that does exist. And this allows them to drive a truck through your existing language. So it's much bigger than just clarifying. I guess hopefully. Thank you. Do you have any questions? All right. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We got a slip, but one, one of the, and raise. Uh, my, not here.
No. Maybe you should remind them how.
So uh, we are engaged in helping conference line, uh, star nine to raise your hand. I'm going to repeat that star nine, to raise your hand and star six to speak and unmute.
Doesn't appear we have anyone on the phone.
My point was maybe an observation earlier that we don't believe so.
It doesn't appear we have anyone on the phone and it looks like no one online is raising their.
He did have a split here, but I would like to hear from you one more time. It sounds okay.
Thank you. You know who I am. Uh, the clarifications that were put into that, I initiated because the original code did not allow for uh registered shoots, which are competition. And I said, we need to have that in there because I didn't want to have get the club out there and then have somebody go, oh, wait a minute, you're having a competition. The way the code reads today, it's it says recreational shooting, uh, nothing expanded on that. And so we said that. We also said the retail because at our club in Green Acres, we did sell ammunition, we sold things to members and people who were there so that they could work. We wanted to have that clarification there. Those were the things. We looked at what you said for a golf course. Golf courses have exactly the same thing we're asking for. Except we dropped RV parking. We don't, they're not going to have RV parking, parking and hookups and stuff like that. And as as you brought up earlier, we cannot use that Thorpe Road property. Restrictions, the Superior uh Court of Appeals did not answer all the other things that they had out there. They just focused on one thing, the RV parking, and they shot us down. We don't want it. And we will be selling that property as we find another site. We're going to combine what we're doing to get rid of the one and buy new. But we're trying to find one in Spokane County.
We have a raised hand.
Toby Willis. Very similar. Toby, number four.
Hi, my name is Toby Willis. I live at two, one, nine, zero, eight, West McFarlane Road. Can everyone hear me fine?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great. Hey, on the addendums, uh, I would just make some suggestions um for anywhere that they're looking for um of the site possibly being at least one mile from a cemetery, schools, airports and uh train tracks, um, which is all above in their in their original site. I think that would be a very good idea to to look at that, which would make uh their their um their uh move easier. Um, also, I think the environmental uh problems or uh situations need to be looked at a little bit better. Um, um, and have a plan for those. Um, and I think a certain amount of space um from homes is also important um for families and things like that. And then also, uh, the possible fire uh problems that could come with multiple RVs. And um, that's really all I have for you folks. I appreciate your time. Um, you guys, uh, I think what they're looking for is some guidance. I think these uh, these would help in in doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Anyone?
Thank you.
Um, let me check. Uh, Patty. Yes?
Remember, uh, full name, can it verse please?
Am I speaking now? I'm sorry. Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, my name is Patricia Appergan. I own product uh property um at uh two, two, one, oh, two, West Thorpe Road, or actually across the street from it, Medic Lake, Washington. Sorry, can't there today.
She's here, listen. She did, okay, we're good.
Am I there? Okay, great. Thank you. I wanted to point out that um I was unable to upload a study that I had done of all the gun clubs that had been listed by uh Mr. Hume regarding RV and parking facilities. Because the majority of those gun clubs, and actually none of those gun clubs have any accommodation for forty RVs as the Spokane Gun Club is proposing. In the majority of those gun clubs, they are little, I call them beer can gun clubs. They're out in the middle of rural areas. They have a gun shack and any kind of RV parking that they could even possibly accommodate. And I've submitted pictures of it um are basically with running a garden hose off a hose bib and an extension cord out the back of the shack. Um, so it's really uh misleading that somehow or another RV usage has to be part of the gun clubs. Um, what Spokane Par- uh Gun Club is is doing and has been part of is something called the PETA Association. That's the Pacific International Trap Suit Shooting Association. There are basically only six of those gun clubs in the state that run those facilities and run those multi-day events. Uh, six of those, five of those have been grandfathered prior to nineteen ninety-three when the land use regulations are in. Only one of those runs shooting seven days a week. And I would just encourage you to take a look at the report. Connie has it in print. I have been unable because of its size to get it uploaded to you. And see that most of, none of them are in a rural traditional area. They are not. And um, a lot of them are sandwiched between protected areas or put out near airports, one's on the end of a drag strip. I think you'll find it very, very informative. And again, I also listed, none of those are, uh, well, only one of those is within, has a cemetery within a mile of it. And it's a historic gun club. And you'll see that most of them have cemeteries that are anywhere in the five to eighteen mile range. And um, I hope you uh are able to look at the report and see how significant it is for us to not have this expansion of this code. And thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
No, that's still her.
We will reach out to her and see if we can, uh, she was having trouble uploading his website.
Any comments? Remarks, comments, observations?
This is Melissa, uh, Wixter, and uh several good points have been raised on both sides. I I do think the whole point of the bringing up the seven days a week from Congress is pretty important for this. Um, yes, cemetery is a generally peaceful place, so I appreciate the fact that that was ours. Um, and everybody around a venture like this deserves to have their own, which will enjoy that as well. Um, the camping, uh, camping part of it does concern me and the sales of moving better here, I mean, I, as I stated before, I I think the better sales, I I don't know about alcohol. I don't know about that. Um, I just, I have some significant concerns about this. And the fact of them, if they're supplying anywhere in Spokane County, it's not just this location for that location, it's wherever they can find a spot that has that much land.
Within the rural traditional or resource land zone, so. So it would not, it would not apply on rural conservation or urban reserve.
Chairman, I have a question of clarity because I know we're building for the future, but we're also dealing with the past, which means we have some existing gun shooting areas or businesses or whatever they want to call themselves that are in existence in the county. Are are we looking at, are they grandfathered in and not affected by any of these regulations and just operating as they have been? Are, are, what are we? I'm saying looking for the future. What is really going to be happening? Just, I need help.
Well, if if the amendment is agreed to, uh, as Melissa pointed out, it would apply to any potential use in those particular zones, whether someone is there now or not. If someone is using a or or operating a shooting range that has been there before the Growth Management Act and before contemporary zoning was put in place, yes, they would be considered a prior non-informal use. They would be allowed to continue, but not expand or materially change that use. This amendment, if they were in one of these zones, uh, would in fact allow for that expansion. It would apply universally. It's not something just for uh the Spokane Gun Club, even though they're the ones who initiated the request for the amendment.
It seems like a lot of folks are on RV parking and it's the gun lover, they're interested in that. Like we can make some segue anybody or anything in that section. Um, I know that as you were pointing out, stop, like, we get hopefully the fine camping. Uh, I don't personally have a problem with camping, but I understand some of the things they're saying about RVers. And so being interested is to be able to define how much push, any sign of size and concerns there. Um, also, you're legal to concern the day and age and times. Um, the WDFW allows for shooting, for example, under a light site that was in September, three thirty, it's a media property of everything. And they allow for shooting from a side this time down seven days a week. Um, so we're going to make some sense of these W, WDFW as a guide, which was two, twenty, dot five, hundred, dot one, four, zero. Um, and it does lay out some pretty clear things. It addresses fire safety, addresses heights around and heights of the hearted. Um, days of the, or times of the day, not days of the week. Um, so I think it would be helpful for staff to review that two, one, dash, five, nine, dash, one, four, zero, see if it makes sense. Your folks concerned about cemeteries and I'm in a story, right? They're about cemetery, one of my favorite places in the world. Um, but they're everywhere. They find a cemetery. I was trying to look up the the doc dating to cemeteries. It'd be hard for us because we started making a distance two or three miles from a cemetery. I don't know about one mile because I have but, you know, is it half a cemetery, uh, cemetery that still has burials happening, cemetery that has a burial in the middle of the year? How do we define that? Do they include people's cemetery that are on their property, by their property cemetery, which are allowed historically in Washington State? It's not that I would validate that. It feels tough to me. Someone else brought up churches versus schools. Well, schools are pretty permanent. Churches can pop up at any time. Um, so the no churches at the time are permanent and what happens is a strict one to locate there. Um, these are some of the concerns that I, I would encourage them to look back at some of these, some of the advantages to do if you can. It's been more balanced um in the language that means folks, you're more comfortable. That I'll leave it.
Mr. Chairman. Chairman, we, uh, we are gracious or gratefully accepting these comments. There's good, good information there. Staff, we'll take this information back. And you will see the results of that uh probably at your May sixteenth meeting.
Should we expect another workshop or are you not expecting?
Uh, it will be your pleasure. If it's set up as a public hearing, you can, as we did for others, you can continue that if you'd like to continue receiving comments and people react to it.
I'd like to hear from some emotions where you all, uh, perhaps, I mean, if there's something which you want to see them go to that. See your apps and this app. Workshop in here or.
It'll be your decision. It's true. I would agree with Logan if, um. Be definitely concerned within the community. I would like to see one more workshop given like this just because. I want to hear more. There should be a will of the mission. About what you're gonna.
I have a question. Where? Have you started that book? We're not going to fill this room up with people who live a mile of it. I was surprised to see the extent of gun sales in the last three to four years. Um, I was even more surprised when my son-in-law and grandson showed up to shoot their newly acquired pistols and they didn't have an idea which end what came out of. I'm exaggerating, but not wrong. And so I think everybody needs to take a deep breath and figure out, hey, are we going to outlaw this, this place where people shoot guns? And we're not going to outlaw, we're going to allow it. Because I can't, I, I can't think of a place in Spokane County that we aren't going to have somebody living within a mile or something like that gun boat. They're going to show up here and they're going to want to go, why don't we do what we did? And I'm concerned with that. We have urbanized our rural areas. And if we urbanize them at risk, other people said, I want to move in to a farming area. And then all of a sudden I got a marijuana pot next to me and I'm down there wondering how the heck you guys put that marijuana pot there? But Lindsay, it stinks. As bad as the noise is annoying. I'm, I'm just concerned that we have to, as a community, we've got to take care of all of us. And, and figure out how we take care of all of it so that my grandson learns how to shoot a gun safely. Um, and, and the, the evolution in the industry is constant. And so to legislate in a way, a lot of things that made America great, the second amendment is part of it. I just have a concern. We figure out a place to put a, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just saw a brief, I, I think that I agree with the beginning. I think a good exercise is once we have. So the language that we're going to run with, like, to, to play the thought experiment, is there actually a place that you could put this based on the rules that we laid out, uh, or would it be perverted? Um, so I would be interested in, like, are there pieces within these zones based on the rules that we end up with in the code? Can we actually find a place that you could even cite one of these? I think that's the word, wild experiment. And I think that maybe some of the way to mitigate the challenge of folks' frustration is by setting some more bounds. Days of the week, K times a day, burning. Um, and you know, I think that that may be how you make folks feel more comfortable about having this used here then. Um, but yeah, finding out, um, it's not easy.
Mr. Chairman, we will uh work to bring this back to you April twenty-fifth for consideration. Within the, uh, as best we can on, on staff ability and time, we'll take Logan's request into consideration. See if we can do some mapping that will help do that. That's always very helpful. And like I said, the comments, many of the comments were quite helpful and we'll look at, look at those as parameters. One thing I did want to make clear that, that we, we didn't put explicitly in the conditions because it, it sort of applies by example, but we, but I think we will, is uh range architecture, range safety, operational safety are standards by shooting sports associations. Uh, we will incorporate some language that says you must use best practices by these accredited associations to, you know, set up an operating range.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you trying to get it done, but again, my personal feeling is we need to go extended and magic. Based on the community as large, which we continue to get more and more investments, I would define with, if you didn't have all that information to the end of April that was in demand, I would, I would, you know, the people that are hearing on both sides, more information that we can all hopefully enjoy and deal with.
We appreciate that and, and we would agree with that. Uh, if we, you know, go back in our office and find out that this is really going to take a couple of solid weeks of, of work, then we'll push that off. But if we can bring you some new information for continuing discussion in April, uh, you can do that. And we can continue it into May until the commission is comfortable moving something forward.
Um, Chairman, I, I would agree with what you're saying, Wayne. I, I want to add one other item that I want to take a look at in my enforcement of the guidelines that we're talking about. I really have some real concerns about that and how it's going to happen or would it happen? That's my opinion.
I want to second that too. I have my own, but what happens if we set some bounds? Like, what is it? Is that a good enforcement issue? Is that a road enforcement officer out there? What, what if it's on the saddle then? Are there road enforcement officers who work on those out there? Or is this a, a law enforcement issue? So I don't, you didn't answer that right now. I'm going to be here briefly. Hopefully these things get enforced, I don't think.
I'm not going with that, Melissa. I mean, I just, I mean, I understand that there's a registration requirement, but are the people that are carrying guns onto whatever or where his property is, are they credentialed? Do they have a, for instance, to your point of, you know, you shoot that. Um, it's, it's, you got the second amendment is, is there, but it's supposed to be a well-trained, whatever they think. Um, people that are ours and that's fine. But you got to demonstrate that you can do this safely and you are in an urbanizing area, definitely. Uh, so I just think that that's really important. I think there is more work to be done. And I appreciate the fact that staff is working really hard.
Thank you. I appreciate that as well to respond to that in one way. Uh, and, and I, I obviously don't speak for the gun club. We are a neutral organization presenting you with a series of facts. But in, in almost every case, range safety is paramount to every gun club that's organized. That's they have range safety officers that are in fact credentialed to train. Uh, that don't let, if there's a, if there's a target shoe, they don't let somebody run down in the middle of the shoe to go look at their target. Range is hot or the range is closed or cold. And so there, uh, most gun clubs are pretty well self-regulated. Uh, so it's not something we really thought about putting into this, but we, we appreciate the suggestions and comments. And yes, it would be a code enforcement uh issue if something came up.
I'm along with the Spokane, uh, and with those safety and everything like that, there's, I'm one of those students in Zycan. I cannot walk on water. Peter did it about for ten feet before he sank and I can have a job all night. So like, when you do go down to the Spokane Rifle Club, this is not your place. There are so many regulations and so many things that happen down there. It's too provide safety, not our safety here, regardless. Um, and then obviously if you want to sell bullets or water or anything, I, I'm pretty sure you're not going to be able to find our electrolytes.
There are no wickers there.
Right? You know, um, guns and alcohol are not mixed. Yeah, but when you go down to the Spokane Rifle Club, I don't know if anyone's been there, but it is a very safe place to go and shoot, very safe place. Um, and if you follow the guidelines on shooting or, I mean, you have to follow guidelines, don't you get picked out, you know? So there are a lot of rules and I'm a definite rule follower. I love my cooking privileges. I love being able to phone the governor for his control, but you have to follow them. So we got to have those guidelines and you got to go down and check out the Spokane Rifle Club, everybody in here. You'll see what kind of safety and security they are going to need to follow.
Further comments? Okay, at this point, the chairman would like to entertain a recess of that objection. So.
You are unmuted.
I'd like to, um, we can build the, uh, okay, kind of plan for a brief recess. Uh, the next workshop will be T P A year one zero twenty four. Um, Scott, if you have any take away.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You saw the details of this last time. It is essentially the idea of allowing a use that is not currently in our code. Slaughterhouses are allowed in the county code, but only in the heavy industrial area. Uh, presumably they're thinking more than you would be packing operation in a small field slaughterhouse. Um, you heard comments from, excuse me, from the public last time. Uh, and we have some ideas from those, uh, that we're gathering. We'll bring back to you again. But we're also looking for additional comments today. Pete made a comment on, you know, why should we limit the size of this? And after, you know, consultation with some of the people that are in the industry, uh, they have a feeling that, uh, it really doesn't need a limit on, uh, you know, had to process per day or square foot. Rather, if the use was, was limited and prohibiting having an adjacent feedlot, that alone would change the scale of these. And it would have to be, you know, one animal at a time. So that, that's something we're looking at, including in the language that would limit that use without putting an arbitrary size of building or, you know, you can do five head a day. But what happens when the sixth one comes in on a busy day? You can't do it till tomorrow. Uh, some of those were, uh, were arbitrary, but the idea of, uh, if you can't house cattle next to the facility, it will automatically limit how it's used. So we get, we got some good ideas from the public last time. But, uh, we are here, uh, to listen to any, any thoughts you may have or anybody from, uh, the audience who are online. If there are further comments on this and if, like the other one, we will bring this back for probably one more workshop, cycle them together and then ask for your recommendations.
We have a couple of stuffs, uh, about this, but workshop is currently, we'll come in. People who want us, uh, for three seconds, that will be a time to go forward and make remarks about this.
Welcome back. Thank you. My name is Lori Hanson. I'm with Darren Lane Farms, Euro fourteen point two five. Dan, I'm over in the phone. Um, first I'd like to say I applaud you guys for taking the time to kind of answer some of the comments. This has been, and I don't, um, this morning, and, um, I spoke last time in favor of, um, trying to put together USDA processing facilities out in traditional rural, trying to get it away from the neighbors. And, um, I wanted to speak Kevin Kiesel. This is the one that did a written comment. And I wanted to be sure that everybody received that information. We had talked about it after, after your meeting because, uh, I've tried to limit the size and whatnot. And I had talked with a couple of gentlemen here after the meeting and I thought Kevin put it together very well. Um, limiting the size of the facility probably is not necessary. Number one is we're in an area where we don't have a lot of local food. All the feed that we currently buy for our cattle, um, is having to be trucked in. And it's very expensive. We don't live in the basin where they have a little bit warmer weather and whatnot. So it's not economically feasible to create a huge feedlots. Um, and then the other point he had was a lot of those large, uh, slaughter facilities that are moving by certain feedlots or, or those owners are throwing feedlots next to it. Literally the feedlot is right beside it. They will run cattle in all the times where if you have haul the cattle, even if it's a mile away from the farm, you, it's still, it's not conducive to just running lots of numbers through. So I don't know if you have any questions on that after reading his information. I thought you did a whole job of putting these thoughts together. And, um, I was just asked to be here in case there are any other questions. So I didn't know that to generate.
No questions. I'm pretty sure that this written comment is for you all to hear. And, uh, I'm glad it was a fascinating debate. It's been a great experience. I think it might be some time in size and strength, but I don't think the right way to do that. But it is, I think, first your expertise and Kevin's expertise. It sounds like I'm separating this, separating these facilities from a feedlot that I just want to do without putting unnecessary restrictions. And so I support that.
Also, anybody who would be able to put in a processing facility is not going to put in anything larger than they believe they can fill because the overhead is so extremely high right now. Pretty much the only way somebody's going to build one of these facilities, to be perfectly honest, is the grants that are out right now. And they're, they're going to have a sunset. They're going to do that forever where you can get grants to help pay for the processing equipment, just for the vocation to help offset the cost. Otherwise, the cost is just extremely high to put one there.
You answered the question already, it would be huge. I haven't seen it. I guess I haven't paid attention. We show a lot of mobile, uh, going on within the, oh my God, mobile slaughtering.
Yeah, we, we would call them, uh, or, uh, it's custom slaughter. And they're all mobile because they cannot butcher on their site unless they are USDA inspected. Therefore, all of the butchering that is happening right now in Spokane County is mobile. Now, he will come out to our farm to the, uh, slaughtering and he hauls it back in his truck and orders and back to his cooler and whatnot. Um, the only other one is usually for wildland, for game processing, um, and that, and they're very hard to find also. Would be a gentleman who comes out, actually processes the casket, wraps it on their place. That's not feasible to do for, uh, most western beachman's day for seven days minimum, two weeks before a morning. But, um, and right now there's not sufficient facilities. That's another thing. You're not going to have people, not currently going to put in and process. It's, it's hard physical work and, um, there aren't enough processors out there right now. Most everybody, you can't get in for a year. You can be on a waiting list and they'll call you up and there's cancellations. But you're not going to have people to be, uh, go try and put in these facilities. We're just trying to encourage others to come in and we have that in for USDA processing in order to sell it to my neighbor, to out of farmers market, um, to a brew, like a brew house. They're doing burgers and whatnot. They are also trying to match up with somebody local to supply burger, uh, mass food through houses in different, as it may notice others. But the only way they can use that means is to process, I think, that Stephen wants.
Got a question. Um, Scott mentioned a line of demarcation is classes of beef processing. And this really piqued my curiosity and sometimes some people have raised, yeah, beef. Like you raise a steer for a buck and sell it for a dollar ten and the processor sells it for a dollar. And, and, but the comment is that Scott made was, and this is my question. If you go over a certain number of cattle, you have to store them until you process. And Scott mentioned the word beef. Go ahead. If our approval isn't a feedlot, but it's, it, it, you get an efficiency in butchering that you, you need to be able to store cattle, is that? I need some help on that.
I'll give you an example and see if this answers your question. Um, when, I'll give you a personal example. I have to haul beef to Moses Lake for my USDA processing. It's all scheduled. They don't just take in extras. They know they're, they have enough staff, cool, cooler space and everything else to butcher ten head that day. They already have them scheduled. Those people are the only people invited and they're killed that day. They don't have an overnight feeding place. They're literally, you come in, um, it's a concrete slab, so they wash it out. They have rules they have to follow also. That's going to be cleaned out. And then it's more like a individual smaller little crowds to divided by a swinging gate. So there'd be, I bring in my two or three and they'll go in with this pen. They swing a gate, the next guy and those, his two or three go into the next one. And they'll all be killed within a couple of hours because they just do it in the morning and then they're working on continuing the process.
They don't have a feedlot that's allowing them to put up.
No, not here. Now, if you, yeah, you're talking much larger scale.
About two facilities that the USDA or Washington, that beef processing, there's only two feedlot companies. The state of Washington, what I can say.
And they're huge.
And they're huge. We're never going to get there.
We don't have the count to support that kind of, uh, processing. But, and, and that goes back to, I know you think maybe beef's not important, but paying freight. Even if I can get, get corn at a lower price, I still have to pay for the trucking to get it. So, um, minimum, I, right now, if I need some canola or something, one truck with thirty ten comes in, I'm paying fourteen thousand dollars and a lot of that is freight. If I need corn, same thing. We're down, we were at twelve to fourteen thousand in the last couple of years because the price of beef was so high. Now we're back down to eight or nine thousand subs as part of that freight. So it's easier to move the cattle and processing facilities to where the feed is. It's just that we have a lot of folks up here that have cow cap operations and whatnot. And they're starting all their cattle out because even if you finish them, they're, they're still going to install them. If you finish, then you're, we're fourteen, you're fourteen, you haven't got here. You're going to help them just facilities that are there alone and then travel to get your, your product. Does that answer your question?
This is all education. I have a question because I'm, I have to go on your judging call and thank you for participating. Have we covered a lot of this stuff? That would make sense to put along with reclamation.
I'm sorry.
That's my question.
After your, after the last workshop, it seemed like everything was pretty good, except it was the size control. And we were even batting around, I would have butchered here. And then the other gentleman who has cow cap operation works with the fairs and whatnot. That's where we're just like, size is not your problem ultimately. We don't, we don't see a size being a problem. And everything else that is, you have there, um, is all doable. Um, it, even there was some concern maybe about how to get rid of lawful and stuff. That's not your concern because they already have to follow rules in order to get rid of it. Because they're already bringing the USDA regulations in. So the greatest need is just opening up the possibility that it could be moved out closer to the cattle out in the traditional rural area. And, um, just allowing that in, trying to bridge some kind of processing. But, yeah, they're moving the fourth by the land downtown by freeway and the supporting services that historically were there. When there were four or five major slaughterhouses, what fifty acres ago maybe, um, between Spokane and Court Lane, we had rendering services high. They helped pay for those things. They don't pay for them now. Now we paid to use it, help fund the whole facility.
I'm looking at this and we have done a lot of right of position. Move this forward. Everyone sidelined a question. The large slaughter operations are run by the state and the state, is that right?
Uh, they own some, a lot of has to do with work. That's more of their interest and I'm not knowledgeable enough to give you.
Let's say that since our last, last meeting, I thought it was several hundred, same thing. Well, the size of the slaughterhouse is, is not the issue. Uh, because as Lori said, our biggest kind of year is giving a life house and, and the interstate fair. And other than that, it's pretty level and the demand is not that big to have it to be a, a size. So again, Lori, thank you for the people who have, uh, involvement with anything we got into the field with. Appreciate your help.
Mr. Chairman, on the sort of tangential comment to Clyde, uh, I can't speak to ownership of meat production throughout the country. However, uh, some of my old colleagues back in Minnesota, uh, would argue that Cargill is still the private company. It's still owned by, uh, but it's not a public company. It's not traded. So it's, it's its own thing. So at least there's that. And they're of course huge. I believe they're still the largest private company.
Thank you for putting it below share. A lot of this just involved some of those. Yeah. Maybe. Kevin's recommendation, um, was, he says to, it's certainly a requirement to be separated from a feedlot facility. How do you do a staff and figure out how to work that in a way that makes sense?
We'll, we'll, we'll let our attorneys earn their salary and work Smith's that episode.
So, um, I'm ready to support that. So this one, uh,
Um.
First, we get that.
Nope, it's just Paul and Mongo.
All of them got, you just, you just had to do this the whole time. You can check it in, but. Um, so the, uh, the next step would be to continue this until we come up with a proper language. So we have seventy two, how, how about that, Scott?
If I'm hearing the general consensus that the last remaining issue being size has now been handled by using feedlot separation, uh, we will prepare something for a public hearing, which will, I don't know that we're within our twenty one day deadline for the first meeting it made, but probably, uh, well, for the sixteenth, we would bring it back as a public hearing. within our twenty-one day deadline for the first meeting it made, but probably, uh, well, for the sixteenth, we would bring it back as a public hearing. I need to make recommendations for.
I would, I would ask that you really understand the definition of feedlot. And the reason I'm saying that is what I'm hearing, Laurie, it's that a process is that you bring in a few steers and they butcher. They butcher that day, but if, but if the volume of the business got to where they, they could take in on a weekend, we could butcher it. And we store it for ten hours. That's not too big. And we mess it up by using the word feedlot as your storage. That's all I'm concerned.
I understand. We will, we will take a look at uh, at that definition. Uh, I think I also heard though that one of the key elements was by, by bringing them in on the day they're going to be processed, uh, the operation doesn't have to provide feed for two or three or four days, which is expensive uh item at the end of that cycle. So rather than try to streamline that, whether it's appointments or something else where they're coming in, going right into process. But we will take a look at the definitions.
Well, yeah, it don't have a nice side.
The only exception for that that I can think of is when you pitch fair time. All the animals there have to be slaughtered within, um, the kids don't take them back to home. So let's say at Interstate Fair, I don't know if we have like fifty, eighty, eighty hogs or something like that. They keep them at the grounds as long as they can, but then they haul them. So they have to put out some food and water because you have probably a two day time period to get them processed. But that would be exceptions. It would be for like a fair or show. Is those apples all gonna get home and the kids are hauling back to get all put into a trailer or a truck and haul to that facility at one time? Does that answer your question? I, that would be the only exception I can think of, but that is not done when you're around that May and August, September fair time for the youth.
On the junior show, even bigger, our sale at the Junior Wolf's, that's a lot more stock this whole week. She probably, they never go home. Once the young kids scell them, they're like, gosh.
Hey, not, not the whole group necessarily goes to that or plans anyways. Some folks have already made appointments at other places. That's the only sign that it might be a problem. And I think that would be an exception for.
Maybe it's just like any language, again, the attorneys and planners who are good at the language, maybe you just said, um, formally permitted feedlot or something to that effect, but we'll still allow for that exception to not be a problem. And when I hear each incident, like we don't want to meet somebody in the future, I think that we're allowed, it's unknown that it wasn't usually allowed. And so I do think like respecting small scale nature and stuff, when they break success. And to me, it seems like there's a lot of environmental protections that will just make that happen. Um, but I think having some separation would be a lot. It's me personally, I feel more comfortable that it's not gonna make somebody frustrated out in their rural zone. And so I would like to see something like that, but that may be a little hard. Understood. We'll see. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Teller. This is a request from, or yes, a request from a constituent uh through our commissioners to consider expanding the uses that are now allowed at small tract egg under temporary uses uh to be expanded to rural traditional zones. Uh, and we've got the entire code up here. If you're interested, we'll certainly post it. But what this was done uh was to try to regulate non-egg activities in the small tract egg sections. And predominantly, we know this as the weddings venues on Reebok. So it's, it's essentially looking at that model and considering whether that should be expanded to rural tradition. Uh, we're, we, we have no recommendation at the moment. This is simply an open question to get. There's some thoughts from the seven of you, uh, and then we will do some further research and bring this back uh in May for another discussion. The one thing I would remind all of us is small tract egg as a zone. I should have brought zoning map. Is relatively compact in Spokane County. It's, it's beyond prior Green Bluff, uh, you know, that's central, eastern, central part of the, of the county. Uh, and a few scattered areas, whereas um rural traditional is widespread. And so if this were to move into that zone, because it would be a zoning text amendment, it would in fact be allowed everywhere in rural traditional zone as it is in STA. And so you may want to, you know, take that into consideration. Is it, is it broadening it into, into areas that were never really anticipated for that? Versus the small tract egg, which started out as in fact agriculture and then moved into farm sales, uh, events on Halloween, uh, the festivals and the markets, whereas rural traditional uh is large lot residential. So there's, there's a, a pretty distinct difference in those zones. So we're, we're open to ideas. Uh, and it doesn't mean it can't work in those zones. It may have a different set of conditions than what is portrayed in a small tract egg. But we would be, we're, we're opening a dialogue and looking for suggestions on how you think that might work or if you have reservations. And with that, I would, I would open that to the commission. This is simple. We will, we will bring this back with more refined form the next time based on what we hear today and what we hear from our.
And fellow commissioners, uh, I was involved in the planning commission back when like Green Bluff came with this similar request. And, and I will be very blunt at the time I was opposed to it because it was a brutal area that I was having some challenges of ingress, degress and so forth. You need to look at these things very openly. I am a first state of record that not opposed to what is being requested here today in some cases that we need to look at. At the time when we were looking at Green Bluff, I'll go back, we forgot the word signage. And to me, it's still disgusting to drive out there and see how they, they do the marketing. It frustrates me. It's just a beautiful area. It's a beautiful occasion that there was signage signs. But we need to be, I'm being blunt, I, I get a note or two, but I really am concerned about signage and I saw that there was a word being, being on the signage. And that's great. Because we're on a busy, busy road and we have a lot of things like that. It does not excite me. But I really am not opposed to this one because it really, we just have to make sure that we don't do something like we did up there, signage. What other item might there be out there? I think for the bot has to be given. But Scott is one of the, the beginning to cause us to think.
Thank you, Glenn.
Which, what is that, could you go with this? Could you put that?
Uh, fourteen five oh six two hundred.
I was just looking at when I was poking around, I was looking at three point one, which is ten shows, ten meetings, which didn't seem like exactly right, but I feel like a lot of times things like weddings do have like big tents and stuff like that. Would it go like government or would it just be from this section that it would be?
It's wide open. Yeah, that's, that's the point where there, uh, this is only as an example because this was crafted to allow for these events in small tract egg. So it would be a reasonable starting point to say, well, this is what we already have. Uh, do we want to expand this condition, these conditions of uses into a different zone? Or do we want to change them or prohibit them?
And so, but then, but then we want to put up one of these big tents and that's just three point one. It's sort of all.
Again, that could be, yeah, the, the commission could decide that uh it, that you like the idea, but you wanted to be at a different scale because of the more residents around as opposed to eggs. So it could be, you know, maximum of two hundred guests. It might be a maximum of fifty. That'd be your choice. So you, you, you have the ability to scale this as well as condition it in, in the discussion.
Do you have any requests to this and that?
It, it came through Commissioner Cooney's office, so presumably a constituent in her district. I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe they're, they're requesting activities. So we will certainly ask.
I don't know. This is so helpful again, somebody that I'm seeing who's been talking about.
It's, it's a big owner of catering events business. I've built a, we've issued a lot of ones. And uh, um, we cater at licensed facilities and we cater at homes. Uh, and I, this is my first look at this. How uh it's, it's huge. Brown calls up. There's actually a catering company. It happens all the time. We cater at weddings, cater weddings at private facilities. And then a lot of these private facilities now have, what do they call them? A lot of the stuff. The show shop, house shop? Shop, yeah, house shop, house shop anyway. Uh, they have their own facility. I mean, is this gonna affect the one off or, or you have an idea how this is gonna be? Uh, and I can, I can tell you from experience, it's a lot of people, but it's on the big rent checks they give for rent, then they put care of places. At fifty weddings, a lot of, but. So I mean, what, what, whatever, is this for the one off or is this?
No, you're right. Anybody, at least at, at my, anybody's allowed to use their property as they see fit. If they're inviting, you know, friends or family and hosting a wedding, that's entirely their business and they can hire whatever caterer or band they want, as long as they live with other codes that are already in place. This would apply to a place that is built and charges a fee for use of so.
Um, I was actually entertained by seeing this on your agenda. Do you? I haven't read this paperwork, so I don't know if I'm in line with what's going on here. Um, we own several hundred acres at North and um helpful, well, about a year and a half ago, my son proposed to a gal outside Old Red Barn out in her field. There's a hundred and so many acres on one side and we own eighty on the other side. That's the county road. And she agreed and then she said, I want to get married in that barn. So we actually fixed up a barn, but for all outlets and appearances. Very few people know what we did until we remixed the little gravel between the barn and the garage that was served through the residence. But inside of the barn is phenomenal, but the outside has been left towards uh an old red barn. We didn't repaint the outside. It, nothing on the outside really looks that. We put a big quilt block on it and we threw a wedding out in the country. Uh, our family married into somebody from Henry County, which is cross line. And when you're in farming community, you have three hundred and fifty to four hundred people show up. So just letting you know, now that we have a facility, we call it a facility. Actually, we don't call it just smoke, but barn. Um, we went ahead and hosted after the fires last fall. A lot of those folks um make themselves up and we just needed kind of like a community event to kind of bolster just power base building. So we opened it up and hosted having people still their little things that they made and we just did pretty good and it was kind of a community event and it went over extremely well. Well, we have requests to, a little bit of a semi like, it's been a code. So I guess I would speak for this in rural traditional, uh realizing that we're also very concerned about our neighbors. Even before my son's wedding, we went and talked to a couple of neighbors there, right there, but they're close enough that it could impact them? Maybe. So we went and talked to them about what was happening and they were all for it out in the country because um we own quite a big land and we'll take care of the neighbors and that was in our way of supporting anything that we could do. We still, you know, we shut around by ten o'clock. All the music people work on at eleven, ten o'clock at night. Um, so I don't know how this is put together, but it would well, people would think it would be a difficult renovation. I'm not sure because we could have a lot of time and just throwing a, a wedding out there. But it would maybe help out some of the local people who own large tracts of land to all uh maybe offset some expenses in their life. And Green Bluff, we've gone up there for years and, you know, I grew up where before there was all the signage and a medicine there was there. And it was a little safer place to drive. And right now, it's like um battlefield when you go up there and just, and you go across the street or anything. So I guess my concern is eat rich. With smaller scale, yeah, you have more of, more of event centers being built specifically for the event. Um, and then you have a lot of traffic issues where, I mean, that's where we were, you know, in like actually place to have is try and get people with a larger tax of land. Um, maybe it doesn't impact, negatively impact the book's environment and science. And it's hugely important if you guys are in favor of this. Because you don't want to change the beauty of the environment around it. Everybody comes out and they see Mount Spokane and Bunsen Boffa and barley fields around. And that's, that's what all the neighborhood likes. So I think it can be done. And it can be basically done and not ruin the environment that white people live out there and stuff. And um yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if we would want to do something like that full time. Cause the other thing is, is this little part of the reality, you start hanging now. We're gonna have my other son's wedding either in May. Otherwise, we won't actually, we won't be doing it until like from July to October, November. Because then also year of winter and, and stuff like that. So if you have this, put on it from us, it's used and larger tracts of land, or it doesn't maybe negatively impact all the neighbors. But how to run this?
Yes, I'm looking for a little bit, how do you find it? You just make sure you're around the language so I can ponder on some of the little pieces there.
Yep, of course. It's, it's under the administrative functions of the code. Yes, yeah.
This would be a.
Um you can correct it, if it's in this code. They would be given an administrative permit generally seasonally, uh they're.
So the fairness of being certain. Considering that coming from. I mean, Dreamland is, I've been there my entire life, maybe here anymore. I mean, I would let money take a cost of. So I mean, you know, making sure that it goes to the credit card. And yes, most people have, I don't know, areas, it could be awful. Uh for people's finances and things like that and and bringing more people to uh. Having that experience in the rural area. Uh it often will be.
Understood.
A thicker spot that this kind of came generated from, there's a, there's a church, there's church facilities within a, within a. I mean. Thank you.
The farming community has a real special method, probably like that. Moving more sheets of barracks, just equipment up and down, wherever it was. Um being affected by, you know, people attending weddings. Such little events uh and new by fields, complaints that might resonate with people, hey. You have um, you're putting a lot of dust in the air and it's interfering with the. That sort of thing, I mean. The farming community has a set of guidelines and they're very private about how they do these things. I I'd like to hear from the the farming community, if if that's possible. This sort of good, their their feelings, I don't, I don't have. You know, one or another on us, but I mean, I understand what's too forward here, but I want to be sensitive to our, our farming community.
Uh that's a very good point and we haven't talked about that, but we will. Because we put together this fairly elaborate program of public participation for the town plan update itself. We now have a tool that we can use beyond just the plan, so. The idea that we've identified libraries and corner stores, places that we can, in the old fashioned way, post a notice on a bulletin. Let somebody know what's going on. We will do our very best to contact and get information from areas. Where the rural traditional zone is in place and see what we could do to survey opinions from those who are ready. And we'll bring that back to you when we can. Okay. We will continue. We will be, you know, starting to fill out your agendas, uh now that we're, you know, we're having kickoffs meetings for the company as planned. Uh starting this month and so again, we're, we're going to try to use the second meeting of. The commission, second meeting of the month for the commission to focus on the comp plan elements going forward. So I, and we've kind of adjusted that schedule with kind of our workload coming in, but uh we're starting moving in that direction. But let me invite up Brian from STA, you know. You can see what's going on in the world of transit.
Yeah. No, it's great. Don't know where I fall on the spectrum of issues you talked about today. Yeah, I mean, it's uh. But I'm with the Spokane Transit, I am the community director for community development. Um which we oversee, I oversee the comprehensive plan as well as YouTube plan. We also, I also touch on the state aspect as well as transit oriented development, so. We will get into that, I just asked.
Yeah, just scroll down. Simple. Just scroll.
So uh what is Connect twenty thirty five, that's a name we've given to our strategic plan, the next ten. STA moving forward is the current one that we're just wrapping up. Uh it should complete from twenty five, twenty twenty six, it had a, a long list of projects that we're close to completing. Um but our current project is broken, has been broken up into two phases, the first phase we completed in December of twenty twenty two. We had a fairly significant community outreach effort to get input on that. We updated our mission uh as well as our vision and then we adapt, adopt some uh some goals, strategies. Some limited performance measures, they'll be expanded on second. Um the vision, sorry. Has been modified to connecting everyone to opportunity. Um and then through the outreach aspect as part of updating that vision, these are the things that we heard most from the public. Higher frequency of service. Service to more places. And expanded hours. Fourth one um was focused on STA being a leader in sustainability. People see that as opportunity for us. Uh goals that we are currently working. Developing initiatives for current uh for right now, so. First one, elevate the customer experience, uh even collaborate with community partners to enhance the quality of that region. What we're doing here today and and just as some background, we're going to each of the planning commissions in the Indian County. Where we use to meet with the planning commissioners in private states. And then the third one, strengthen our capacity, anticipate responsive fans of the region. You know, this one I'd like to highlight, just our role. During the fires in medical length, it was a, there was a request for some of our assets to be used to evacuate people. So when you think about STA and what it can, can do, uh what, how we do uh operate in the region, you know. That is certainly an outlier, but it. Uh phase two process, we started that with a number of questions, this kicked off a year ago in July. The focus. Of the questions was what programs, projects and investments. Are needed to deliver on the strategic foundation of phase one? How should our service and our modes and the network, the transit network evolve in the next decade? And how can new investments align with the funding that we have? And then also the important. To answer what will be required to deliver the. In terms of resources, new capabilities, even facilities. In parallel with this, we're updating uh facilities master plan right now, so trying to make sure we marry the strategic plan with. Understanding of what our facilities needs will be going forward. Uh this is kind of a limited look at what our process has been. We are, let's see a schedule here in a second, we've completed the network assessment. Um this is really ramping up right now. Uh we've done a limited funding analysis and. Right now completing our organizational capacity analysis, important part of it is to understand. Where we are going to be in the next ten years, do we have from organizational standpoint, the capacity to achieve that, will that take? Take more. Would it take more labor? This spring, late spring, early summer, we're going to be getting into the initiatives that we're, we're focused on. And refining those into the fall with the final development plan. Hopefully to be delivered in Q four. This year. So um you can see we're about midway of the initiative list development, evolution or refinement. We have a workshop with our board scheduled for this quarter, I think it's June, we'll be talking in detail. About initiatives, we're engaging with the public to try to understand what they see as the initiatives we should put in. We do have three principles for funding and investment with strategic plan. Um first one is ensure that we can maintain and deliver the improvements we made since twenty sixteen. Recall STA moving forward passed a two tenths of one percent sales tax. It was approved by the voters to fund. Use that funding to deliver significant improvements throughout the network, not only in terms of service, but also in. How can we also leverage our current financial position to deliver one-time investments in the future that are aligned with. Connect twenty thirty five. And then a very important one is this last one, which is if we want to expand service. That's going to require some new routes. As we try to meet, if you recall those, those four items that we heard from the public, they want frequent service, they want. Service in more areas, all of those things are going to drive a need for more revenue to accomplish that, so. How do we manage that? Fixed route assessment goals, so this was something that was completed the end of last year. Uh third party consultants working at helping us work on this plan. Came up with these, came up with these goals, really looking, and this is what's one of the views. How can we respond to any changes in the travel market? Since COVID, things have changed. Um in terms of transit use and. We want to be sure that as we look at that, we're making sure the system wide efficiency is still in place and. And then identify the best opportunities for future moment. The report we received back was STA performing quite well. Our recovery is outpacing all the clearers across. Comments where you don't want to see a lot of. Agencies that are in this good of a position post pandemic, a lot of struggling. As of September, our weekend ridership was at about twenty nineteen. And then an interesting discovery was that weekend ridership is exceeding twenty nineteen levels. So when I talked about those changes that have occurred, there are things that are happening. Also, the system wide average for productivity, um the feedback was is that. For excellent for a system for our. The reasons for the success, um by their analysis, services is in the right places. So the network we've developed over the past decade plus is working and working well. We serve identity areas, uh we also serve the areas of highest need as well. Most routes have multiple options for connections, um not just at the plaza. With the plaza at all, so um the best corridors that we have have fifteen minute service. The important thing about this is that takes away the need to constantly reference a schedule. You can provide more certainty to passengers and riders, you'll increase your ridership. Because it becomes a, a convenient and easy way to get. And there's, there's really that, that, that trade off between cost of parents. Being able to provide higher quality of service, higher quality of service takes things much, much. Just cheaper than, so um. The other thing we do in the final bullet there is that we really focus on constant improvement. Adjusting our surface and make sure we're tweaking it to responding to the needs of. Uh opportunities that we've identified so far, uh looking at commuter service and seeing how we can. Manage that given the changes that we've seen. Growing region, it's no surprise there, improving Spokane Valley service, it's a significant opportunity, there's a tremendous amount of growth there. Um from a residential perspective, uh looking also at on the band service. This is sort of mobility, we call it mobility on demand, we can't serve everywhere in the region. Uh there's certainly some areas that, that, that we can't get to, but. Uh we're looking at piloting the possibility of providing mobility on. Isn't like an Uber where it's origin to destination, but could it be close to origin and get it people to our network? In some format so that then they can take advantage of it. Not necessarily delivering. Looking at weekend service. Um tweaking it so that can become more valuable and grow it even more ridership. Uh and then continuing our implementation of high performance. Perhaps seen around town, the. You know, what, what this delivers is more frequency regularly. Looking at the enhanced bus stops to provide better amenities for riders. Being able to look at uh, look at a monitor and see when the bus is arriving versus just guessing and hoping. Down the street to see if you can see it turning. Uh so we have two action pathways uh for moving this forward. First is complete STA moving forward and near term investments, that's the first block. Uh the second block is to identify the improvements and expansion options. As connect twenty thirty five initiatives and evaluate, those are the two. Uh efforts we could be undertaking. The near term and one time investments. So these are primarily looking at Division Street BRT. Uh which goes from downtown out into me as a transformative project. Continuing to improve and expand our high performance transit network, looking at speed, reliability improvements, station upgrades, lawnmowers. Supporters. Expanding coverage, and that's where I talked about that. Reach some of those geographic areas. Long term and ongoing would be continuing to improve and expand that H P network. Upgrade the service, enhance the frequency, continue improving evening and weekend service, expand the coverage. Of the fixed route network and then additional regional service, and this is the idea of trying to reach into. Uh that population across the. Seeing how we perhaps connect our network, so it's a tremendous amount, been in Liberty Lake. Anytime recently during rush hour, the amount of traffic that's pressed forward. In quite a few parts. Wherever it is they're going, so there's a huge amount of demand. Uh the initiatives kind of flow out like this, I mentioned the goals at the very beginning, so. Three goals, we'll have their collection of initiatives that we're working on categorizing. Um but they're going to represent the programs, the projects and then the investments we're going to make. To deliver on these three goals, and that's some of the arguments. Uh we'll continue to refine them into individual categories under those goals, uh but. Three of the big flagship projects, one we're working on now, Division Street BRT, going to continue. I mentioned our facilities master plan. And then the looking at zero emission lead transition. Uh that doesn't necessarily mean electric, there's a variety of technologies. I'm sorry, bus rapid train. No, it is if you've seen, if, if you've seen the city line in downtown Spokane, so that's an example, it's higher frequency. So more service during peak hours, every seven and a half minutes, really high amenities in terms of the, the assets that the buses. And uh delivers quite an impact to surrounding land uses. So those core initiatives that we mentioned here. You know, these are conditioned on the renewal of the additional two tenths of one percent sales tax rate. That's our primary funding, that, that comes up for renewal um this decade, I think it's twenty twenty eight, I believe. So um. You know, that, that will be the source that we use to leverage those resources to implement those core initiatives. Uh these will be one time projects uh for capital investments as well as pilot projects. Uh looking at ways to optimize service, again in a cost neutral manner. So that we're not having to use other revenue for that. So that we're not having to use other revenue for that. And then identify what the highest priority investments that fit within those. But that timeframe would be from twenty twenty-five. The second bucket is the enhanced initiatives, our additional topics over and above. Obviously, as I said, we'd need a new funding source. Such as additional one-tenth of one percent sales tax rate or other, uh, make sure that's identified in place. And then the initiatives would be looking at high priority investments that we can't deliver with our resources we have in place today. Going above and beyond that. It could include recurring investments such as new and expanded service, but that timeframe would be from twenty thirty. Uh, this slide just identifies visually how we are giving all the concepts for the various initiatives and where they're being sourced from. The engagement efforts, STA Connect twenty-three five, uh, we're currently connecting, have been for a few months now, stakeholder organizations. Uh, we do have an inside network. Uh, this is a group of individuals that we've, uh, we've been sending monthly surveys to on particular topics. We established that at the outset because so often we do engagement and then we go away. Communication until we need to talk to them again later on in the project. But we do this on a monthly basis and then the topics vary. Last month we did a, a survey and they're very short surveys, five to eight questions. Uh, we did a survey on, um, technology and transit and what the expectations were between the two. So, uh, we find that this keeps a group of people engaged with what we're working on. Uh, but it also provides us the opportunity to, to ask them about specific topics that we may need information on at that time. So uh, the technology one was, was pretty interesting. There's a, a high expectation that transit is going to be basically intertwined with, with technology and that what we're delivering is very much technology-based. So. Yeah. Okay. How will you be? Yeah, can you give us an explanation on the conclusion of this beautiful presentation? Two more slides, really. Just a little, two slides, yeah. So we're also doing board, that's right. We're also doing board engagement tours, um, leading to twenty twenty-three. This is to allow our board, which is primarily elected officials, an opportunity to see kind of the back office operation. A tour of our dispatch center. And, um, it's been, it's been pretty useful, I think, uh, to then see kind of how it works. Specifically, a future one will be looking at getting out to the Black Valley Service Center in May and get a tour of that. This just highlights the awareness activities. Um, going forward, part of the initiative development, we're going to be doing rider forums, uh, presentations like today. We'll also be showing up at community partner events, uh, and there will be a general public survey. So, um, also seeking employee and. Really this step that we're focused on next is identifying what those candidate initiatives are. What should we focus on implementing in the next ten years? We'll be looking at the capacity recommendations that are coming forward, developing the performance metrics. And then, as I mentioned, we'll have our next board workshop, second quarter. So a lot of information. Happy to answer any questions.
I've got a question. We're in the process of, you know, doing. Also, when the living of the house. One of the things that I didn't remember. I have. How cars transport across thousands, which eliminates five people trying to exit the vehicle home or house. How can I plan in the middle of the, cut down, uh, person bases, taking closer to a corridor? And know because the bus train is available to replace a part of my. Is that something we're going to go through this in our process in the next? I mean, I don't know what we're changing, changing whatever we see changes. Open. Or what is this where we are? Transportation always is bad. You gotta get that transfer. You know, it works a victim. If I find a scattle, nothing they can watch, they would go wherever they could. So tell me how, is that something we're going to be working on? How do we, how do we bridge that gap?
I think my, my initial take would be when land use follows transit investments, you can have make that happen.
What if that happens?
And that is a political decision. Yeah.
Well, that's, that was, that's where I'm thinking. That's exactly the point. So is that something that we can get our turn to run? So we have a target, whether we're the, 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 the.
Well, I think we're trying to do that at STA. Um, you know, we, we realize the value of transit-oriented development. The city line is essentially a really good example of that. And we're starting to see projects pop up there that provide no parking. Forty unit apartment buildings being constructed right now. There's another one right on the line. And that's, you know, that's what we're doing.
Transit oriented, no.
That's right.
Remember?
Yes.
But I think a little bit white, and I didn't follow, and I said, it's a lot easier to figure out how many people. Uh, follows.
Yeah.
Uh, but we had, we were so. It's still so insane. Oh, there's no sense. So land use, these, these, I think.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we are involved in any CIPA that comes across our desk. We weigh in at that, but I would think that's too late. Your, your point where you have investors lined up, you know, you're ready to go. The CIPA is just, you know, this is one of the last things we're going to do before we get permits. Uh, plan, a plan submitted for permit. You know, part of the, how do we, the question is, how do we get in front, what, from an employer citing a facility? How do we get in front of that so that the site selection or part of the site selection discussion? Versus just before, you know, project gets permits. Yeah.
We're taking those choices. That's our job.
Yeah.
And that's in the path. And, and unless we have a target, I mean, I'm not aware of any process yet, but you have to meet them.
Thank you. Yeah.
When is it a point one tenth of an increase?
One tenth of one percent, yeah.
How, how much do you get that?
Uh, it's based on sales tax revenue. So if you had one dollar, one tenth of one percent, it would be, I have a calculator here.
What is your, your point is you got, what is a dollar?
I don't have that number right here. Yeah. Yeah, but we can, we can sort of provide that.
I think maybe I'll go back to this, um, will be a lot of these initiatives, some of these initiatives involve working in unincorporated county or the south side of the city. That's generally what we're talking about, like through cities. We have a whole, we have a, it's sort of like a public participation on where are potential initiatives, where is our resource plan to go without in a county? Those kinds of things, we have a whole grasp as we locate the comp plan. What decisions are already made? So we can think about that and then what decisions are still in place?
Yeah. Yeah, I think however best we can be engaged in your planning processes, you're evaluating land use, densities at sites. That's a great suggestion. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Well, fair. Oh, appreciate it.
Follow-up to that, yes. We have engaged with Carl and Brian, the planning team over there continuously on both the amendments side. And we will do so more on the comp plan itself, better aligned. The county's vision, which of course, as you know, uh, also has to now realign itself with all of the community, all the cities and towns plans have to be in conform with county plan. We're going to be working as best we can with other agencies that have their own planning functions, not just, uh, you know, schools, fire, water districts that we've talked about already, but, you know, STA. Uh, STA needs to be an integrated part of planning for future land use. And so some of that is anticipating that, that, uh, we're working in a way collaboratively so that they are looking at, uh, their funding sources for capital as well as operations over perhaps that same six-year plan that we're looking at building out particular areas. So they do come together. So we'll, we're very much committed to make. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. You know, that's kind of like the message with me, because you are a very close attention, you pay very close attention to the methods and I appreciate that. You went around from the most, but he caught a couple of typos for my dollars. You have to stay. So we have four people that can vote with us, I guess, for farming. There's a second on, um, well, there's check by E. Without the check, um, all of the favorites by, by saying hi. All right. All of those say, sign by saying nay. This one is circled by adopted. Thank you. Uh, motion. Anybody? So.
I can't remember if I already brought this up, but I think our Brian has said we need to do the last. It's serious each January. I can't remember if we did that again.
Okay. Absolutely. Hey, you know, I'm just doing now. Um, nothing else to say before us. Okay, we're gonna pay a motion to a chair. So. I'm gonna let, we'll let, we'll do the second one. Most favorite term, I'm sitting right by same eyes. I'll pose a, we're here by a jerk. It is, uh, unwritten. Thank you all. Thank you.